And time for study session for the Douglas County Commission. We're glad you're here if you're joining us online or at the courthouse. Today's study session will be an update from the Lawrence Community Shelter. We will not take any action. This is for informational purposes only. If you have public comment to provide, we invite you to attend our business meeting at 5:30. Where we provide options for public comment on any item that you would like to address the commission on. With that, I'll turn it over to Jill Jolker to welcome our guests. Jill?
Good afternoon, commissioners. And I have Renee Cool, the executive director with the Lawrence Community Shelter. On the conversation as well. We framed out some, some information that kind of captures the, the high points of the, what I, what I consider to be considerable accomplishments for the Lawrence Community Shelter. Largely in, in Renee's tenure, which is a little over a year now. And she, in, in the information that she provided that I put into the cover memo that was provided with each of you. I, I, I think that she did a nice job of highlighting some of the key metrics that we expected her to be accountable for. I know that there's one item on there that was a piece of information related to some of the fundraising. Their, their non-governmental fundraising, community fundraising efforts that have been going on. And I, I just got an email from a member of Renee's staff later this afternoon, kind of cat, letting the rest of the board members know the results of the Giving Tuesday campaign. And I, I think I'll let Renee talk about that later in the presentation. But if you recall, the, the direction that this commission gave to the Lawrence Community Shelter a couple of years ago, when they were in considerable financial streets was to work with agency, community partners. Focus on their, the folks that have been there for a considerable amount of time or recidivism rates, things of that nature. And be housing focused, but also the focus on non-Douglas County, non-city of Lawrence, financial support. And I think what you're going to hear from Renee largely do what I, I think is going to be a conversation is they've made considerable strides in that direction. And I'll just remind the commission that I serve as an ex officio board member on the Lawrence Community Shelter Board. And so I feel like I have in my interactions as a board member, but also in my interactions with the, the pretty frequent activities, whether it's the Housing and Human Services COVID response efforts that have been going on since March. Are Built For Zero efforts, coordinated entry. I'm in, I work with Renee and her staff almost all the time. And I'm just, I'm really, I think she's a real asset to the community right now. And she's a part of a lot of really important projects. Because she's a recognized thought leader and subject matter expert in a lot of areas. So I'm, I'm here for questions and that information as it's, as it's helpful. But I'm going to hand it over to Renee now.
Thank you, Jill. That's a great compliment. Thank you so much for, for saying that, those nice things about me. And Jill has been a huge help to us and has just done like incredible work in terms of her adopting, you know, her real professional investment in ending homelessness and understanding homelessness and why it's really crucial for any community to have an effective strategy for not just triaging homelessness, but, but resolving it. And so I just admire Jill so much for everything she's done for us. It's been awesome. And I want to thank Nancy and Michelle too. I think this is the last time we'll meet in this capacity. And I'm so grateful to you guys for the support that you've shown us over the last 14 months since I came on. It's, it's been a pleasure to work with you. So Jill, I sent out a report to offer you guys in writing. And I think it's a really important time for us to talk about what the community shelter is doing right now. Obviously, we've been through many, many changes over the last eight months since the pandemic began. And just like any other organization in town, we've had to adopt multiple times, change procedures and policies multiple times in order to prevent an outbreak amongst the population of vulnerable people that we're serving. And in that time, I've come, really come to understand shelter providers as first responders. And I don't think we always get framed that way. Or are recognized as first responders, but that's certainly the case in this scenario in which being houseless is really just, it's always a public health threat. And I say that all the time. And it's always a public health crisis. And now more than ever, that's the urgency of that is, is really crystal clear. So basically, if I could just tell the story a little bit of how we've responded to COVID-19. In March, when the county went under a stay-at-home order, LCS was under a stay-at-home order with our guests. Over time, as the public health parameters changed, we changed our parameters. So we had intakes closed for a while. We didn't allow staffer, we didn't allow guests to leave unless they were going to the doctor to work. And that went on for until the stay-at-home order for the community was lifted. And then we began intaking again, once we had an isolation and quarantine site set up for, for people who were exiting, who need, who were living in congregate settings, who needed to be quarantined and isolated. And Jill, Sarah and the county played a really important role in actually executing that agreement with us, making it happen. Helping us identify the hotel partner. And that was a really crucial moment for us in, in terms of ensuring that we really were going to be able to operate safely through the pandemic. And so I'm again, super grateful to the county as an organization for making that happen.
Renee, real quick, what might be helpful to give the, give the commission a sense of what was before the pandemic? What was the capacity at the shelter? How many guests did you have? And then walk them, walk them through where that's gone. Cause I think that that's a, an ongoing point of misinformation and can, and miscommunication in the community to be up, how you've changed your capacity to be responsive to the, to the pandemic.
Right. So we, if we go all the way back to when I started September, Labor Day 2019, the shelter had just exited 60 individuals. I was tasked with fundraising to increase our capacity, or we made a choice as a board to proceed, to pursue that. We didn't have to, but because of the community's ask, that's what we, what we did. We successfully fundraised, we raised our capacity, we had a little help from the, the city of Lawrence. Adding additional funding that winter. And we were back up to 105 individuals in the building last January before the pandemic came to Douglas County. We halted intakes when we put the stay-at-home order in place. At that time, we weren't using, we didn't have access to PPE. We only had cloth masks and a lot of bleach. And that was pretty much it. And through the, through the stay-at-home order, that's about all the PPE that we had until mid-April. So it was important for us to halt intakes. We were working through that time to set up an isolation and quarantine location. And by the time we lifted the stay-at-home order, we had fewer than 40 people being sheltered at LCS. At that time in May, we worked, we established the isolation and quarantine facility, which is a local hotel who has maintained a partnership with us throughout, since May, throughout the summer. And that partnership has been really successful. We have limited our capacity in the shelter to 40 for the duration of the summer. And we made a really purposeful push to exit as many people to housing as we could. So in May, we exited every family member who was in our family program to housing or to safe shelter with a family or friend. So that was 35 individuals. By end of May, we'd exited out of the shelter. The majority of them were put, were placed into permanent housing. They use subsidies like rapid rehousing, assistance from us for security deposit and first month's rent, assistance with identifying landlords and getting placed in housing. And a couple households were placed in the New Horizons Program through LDCHA, through the Housing Authority. And a couple of them, and that puts them on the path to a Section 8 voucher. So, so all of those families that we exited to housing utilized tools like rapid rehousing and our other rental, rental subsidy programs we have in the community to exit the shelter. So for the duration of the summer, our capacity has been limited at 40 individuals. There was two reasons for that. The first reason was based on working with Kathy Colson at the Health Department, walking through our building and determining based on the availability of space, the, the ability to provide everyone with six feet of social distance, what our new capacity would be. So we have, we have bunk beds, we have a bottom bunk and a top bunk. We eliminated top bunks because we didn't want people coughing and potentially spreading the virus into the air and, and reaching people that way. So we decided just to use bottom bunks and we taped plastic sheets around three sides of the bunks. We're still using that, by the way. So that air conditioning airflow in rooms didn't move the virus from guest to guest through bunk beds. So, uh, once you eliminated top bunks and you made sure that everyone had six feet between the beds, that limited us to between 50 and 60 beds. Then we also, because we weren't able to access surveillance testing or do any testing, had a positive case plan to move everyone to a hotel to quarantine if we did have a positive case. So we had to limit to 40 people in the building. So that in the event that someone tested positive, we had the availability at the hotel to move everyone out. And so that was our plan until surveillance testing became available to us, literally at the beginning of, of this week. So that's where we are. Now we're able to regularly test everyone. And we're testing 25% of our capacity every two weeks. So we have 16 surveillance tests between staff and guests that we're offering at random every two weeks. And we really need to be able to do that through the rest of the pandemic in order to continue sheltering additional people. So that's a lot, a lot of data. Any questions about that so far? Yeah.
If you'd mentioned to like what the changes with families has been too, and how you see that moving forward in the future?
So, once we, when we exited families, we moved women from the smallest dorm room to the, the potted family side of the, of the shelter. So the family side of the shelter had lofted pods with like half walls separated for, for 10 to 12 families. We've moved women into that part of the facility and women now have private bathrooms. Before they were sharing a congregate bathrooms with congregate showers. So now they can use private bathrooms. There's an ADA access in that bathroom. And they're on a locked wing of the shelter that men can't access. And they generally have more privacy. It's quieter and it's just much more trauma-informed environment for them. So after seeing the impact of moving women out of a cramped, smaller dorm, which really couldn't facilitate safely with social distancing, the amount of women we were sheltering into this larger potted part of the shelter, I just decided like it, it's not fair to women to move them back into a cramped space. And families were really cramped in that area anyways, to begin with. When we moved families out of that side of the dorm, it was incredibly dirty. And we found roaches in the carpet and it took us weeks to get it kind of cleaned out. We had a cleaning crew come through and deep clean the entire wing, family wing of the shelter. And what was there was really gross. I mean, we really had to confront as a staff the, the nature of the environment in which families were being sheltered. And it, it just wasn't anything that I would want for my own family. So that's where I, that, that happened in May. And that is when Dan Rockhill contacted a member of my staff to ask, I read this article in the paper about the struggle you're having with isolating and quarantine people. I need a project for next year. How can I help? Literally, how can I help? And powerful, like just such a powerful experience. So it makes me emotional to even think about it. So that's when we decided to go with the Tiny House Village Project and make that our family shelter.
One thing that I think if you could talk just back up a little bit, I remember when you, either you communicated it to the board, I think at one of the meetings a few months back. You know, not just observations about the hygiene conditions of, of the families, but that you observed something that I know I had personally observed in the many months that I've been coming to the Lawrence Community Shelter for meetings and events is that it was not a good environment for children and families to be in, in the first place. And because you have singles and singles with some pretty profound issues, it was, you were never set up to Trump in a, in a, in a supportive, trauma-informed environment to set, to serve families in a meaningful way in the first place. And I know that, like, that's a hard, that was a hard decision to make. But I, I, I think that was an important one, that when the board heard that and when I heard you talk about the reasons why, I felt very good about it, even though I knew that it would be challenging for you to answer that question over and over again. And I'm thankful for the Rock Hill Project as well, that kind of answered, well then how are you going to serve families?
And I, and I also had a conversation with Dana Ortiz around that time before we landed on Monarch Village. And, and I said, like, I'm, I don't feel that our shelter is safe in the middle of a pandemic for families with children. And because of how cramped everyone was and because we were, what we were hearing about asymptomatic transmission from, from children and, and things like that. And, and how difficult it would be to track who's COVID positive in, in families. And understanding the vulnerability of kids who are experiencing homelessness and living in a shelter. And Dana said, well, we're, we're planning to convert one of our buildings into a temporary shelter. And so that gave me some peace of mind. I thought, okay, we're still going to have shelter, some shelter access in the community. I think the demand that we're seeing, you know, totally exceeds like our family shelter capacity right now. And so we're anxious to get the Monarch Village Project squared away and get the containers built and loaded over here. But yeah, I think that people, people who are in a trauma, going through something traumatic, which is what homelessness is, parenting on top of each other is really, really hard. And I, I think that people assume that single adults in the shelter are like really volatile, volatile. And the behavior from like parents sometimes can be really, really vol- volatile. And it can be really, really difficult to, for any of us to parent in front of another parent, right? But then when you're with nine families who are strangers and they're watching you parent your kid and you're all right on top of each other, it's extremely stressful. Like, it takes a village, but everybody kind of needs their own place where they return to and where they have their own family values and their, and their kids know who's really responsible for them and all, and all of that. And so I think that the tiny home project is going to provide the privacy that, that parents deserve. It's going to provide quiet and peace of mind and like a, a place to go at the end of the day to settle down and be together. And they'll still have the option of being in community with one another. They'll still be able to support each other in those positive ways. But they'll be able to go into their own space and shut the door. And I think that I, I, I'm anxious to see whether that, what kind of outcomes that yields in terms of how quickly we can exit people, how, how quickly they move through the stages of change and whether they return to the shelter or not. It'll be really interesting to see. We had a pretty high recidivism amongst our family members in our program before. And so I'd like to see less recidivism. We want homelessness to be brief, rare in one time. And so that's kind of what we're, what we're trying to help people achieve is once you get housed again, stay housed, let's quickly get there. And, and how, and your experience of, your experience of homelessness plays, plays into whether you become homeless again and how well you're, you stabilize once you are housed and, and how you stay stable and all of that. So, so that's how our capacity ended up pretty far drawn down. We were using hotels through the summer to do isolation and quarantine. We provided quarantine. The county entered into an agreement, offered an agreement for that, for reimbursement for isolation and quarantine for all congregate shelter invited, providers or most of them. But not everyone had the level of need that we had. So we were really anxious to get that going. And we've utilized it a lot. And then we actually received referrals from people for isolation and quarantine. So we did end up making our quarantine program accessible to all of those partners. And through that program, we isolated or quarantined 26 individuals up until two weeks ago, when the state opened their own isolation and quarantine program. And four of those individuals were COVID positive. All of the cause of COVID positive people that we have supported in isolation at our site were from other congregate environments. So they weren't from the Lawrence Community Shelter. They were COVID positive from other partners. And so we were just really happy to be able to provide people in the community, partners in the community with a quick, like immediate isolation solution if their guests and clients were staying in a congregate setting. And then we've now mostly ceased offering isolation and quarantine. And we've immediately pivoted to allowing the state of Kansas to do it. So we're more than happy to let the Emergency Management Council run their facility. That's just one less thing. So that's, that's been really awesome. And it was like, they rang our doorbell at the exact moment when Jill and I were like, okay, we really need this. So that, so that was really great. So we're pivoting to partnering with them and, and working with their program for, for our clients, as well as people who are unsheltered. And, and anyone in the community who, who needs that, who cannot isolate or quarantine on their own can, can access that. Almost everyone. College students can't and folks who are incarcerated can't. So then with CARES money, with CARES funding that became available in the fall, we received $100,000 to run a hotel shelter, not for folks who are exposed to COVID or COVID symptomatic or positive. Just for people needing a shelter. And we've used that funding to expand access to shelter in the community. We had, through our hotel partner for isolation and quarantine, something already set up. So we've just been running that out of the same hotel. And that partnership has just been really, really terrific. And we're really grateful to that hotel partner. And we have sheltered 81 individuals since those funds became available. In that shelter, we have 68 people sheltering there now in 38 hotel rooms. And so I have an onsite staff person who coordinates that. And then I have an AmeriCorps member who is dedicated to supporting, both of those staff members are supporting staff guests onsite there. We delivered Christmas Thanksgiving meals to all of the people in the hotel. And those folks have 30-day vouchers, which are renewable. Many of those people who are staying in the hotel have been referred to us by partners. So we're still extending our partnership model into the hotel. And we're really relying on our partner, case manager and supportive services providers to connect people with their next step. If they don't have a next step, we can receive them at the community shelter if necessary. But we're working really hard to exit as many of those people to housing as we can, or to another safe temporary shelter option, or to living with family or friends. So, so that's the goal for all of those folks. And we're relying really heavily, heavily on our partners to assist us with exiting people appropriately from the hotel. I'm really hopeful. It looks like based after last night's city commission meeting, that ESG funding will be available to extend the hotel sheltering project through the winter. So that will be how we maintain that level of shelter through, through the, you know, through the end of March, it looks like.
Renee, speaking of ESG, that's a nice, I, I know that, I, I think the commission has a good sense of the, the other CARES Act money that have been invested in the capital improvements. But it might be, speaking of the ESG, that might be a good opportunity to kind of pivot to how you see ESG and other non-local government funds and the fundraising being more part of your sustainable financial operating model. I'm, I'm super excited about the ESG opportunities.
I, I am too. And it's kind of amazing that that, that program has been flooded for, I don't know, the first time in my career, I've seen this amount of money come through the ESG program, which stands for the Emergency Solutions Grant. In the nineties, it was called the Emergency Shelter Grant. So it was a congressional HUD program set up originally for emergency shelters. Over time, that program split up into prevention, rapid rehousing, shelter and outreach. And agencies can apply for funds for all four of those purposes. LCS had struggled with compliance and managing ESG funds because there's just a lot of documentation associated with managing those funds and delivering services through those programs. Issues with HMIS made compliance really, really hard. HMIS is the Homeless Management Information System that we use for registering all the folks experiencing homelessness in the community. And so I was super lucky to be able to hire a new director of programs. Her name is Hani Welk. And she, prior to coming to LCS, was a director of programs at Restart in Kansas City. And that's a shelter that offers shelter to thousands of people annually. And she's a experienced grant manager and has managed ESG funds in the past. And so lucky for us, she came on board right before we were awarded funds through that program. So we were able to get funds for shelter operations. And, and we have, there was three rounds of ESG this year, which is kind of incredible. And so we applied for more funding. And so we've applied for in total, $300,000 in rapid rehousing funding from ESG. We haven't been heard if we'll be awarded those funds or not. But Burt Nash did through the first round access for over $400,000 in rapid rehousing. So, and we've worked our way through those funds pretty quickly. We have pretty much every, almost all the clients housed that are going to be housed through that, that funding. And of course, they'll be supported for many months. And so Burt Nashville applied for, applied for additional funds as well to extend support for those clients through the end of 2021. So hopefully we'll have a solid group of folks who were homeless when the pandemic started, who are housed and is supported through rapid rehousing long enough, hopefully for them to access Section 8. So that's, that's pretty much how rapid rehousing works. It bridges you from homelessness to Section 8 because that period of, of waiting can be a year or two years. So we're seeing that happen now, just the way it's supposed to, which is super rad. And it's just really important that the Lawrence Community Shelter is positioned to access rapid rehousing from the feds, whether it's through ESG or through the Continuum of Care Program. Because, because one important reason is that federal funds like that have a high match requirement. But LCS is sitting on a lot of leverage for match dollars because of your support for us, because of the city's support, because of our private fund, ability to private fundraise and because of our volunteer force. So through our move-out program, I think we probably have over $100,000 in, in kind. So through our move out program, I think we probably have over $100,000 in, in kind revenue that could be used as match for a rapid rehousing program funded by ESG or COC. So I hope that that funding comes through for us in addition to the shelter operations funding that we've restored. And we're still just waiting to see whether KHRC is going to fund us for that or not. But that's a really crucial part of our strategy. Nonetheless, us not really having our own rapid rehousing funding doesn't mean that our clients aren't accessing it because we're using the coordinated entry system to award those funds. And so through Jill and Jill's really amazing work and Built for Zero and the collaborative work we're doing, we've really honed in on coordinated entry. Dave Tucker at Burt Nash is doing an amazing, amazing job of sort of improving that process and managing that process as our regional coordinator. And our clients can complete a VIXPDA assessment. They get a score, the folks with the high scores are prioritized for housing assistance, whether it's permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing through the ESG program. And quite a few of our clients who really need that medium term, longer term support have qualified for rapid rehousing assistance. It's, I think, however, it's like five households who have that assistance, which is great. It's between, right now, I think you can access it for up to 12 months. So, but, but that's not all the folks that we've housed. Since the beginning of the year, we've housed, helped move 109 folks into housing. And that includes partner agencies who've used our move out program. So we have a really amazing team of move out volunteers, folks who donate goods to us so that when people exit homelessness to housing, they have help literally moving their belongings. And also they can get furniture, house furnishings and things that we store in our warehouse for people. So between folks that we've exited from the shelter to permanent housing and people we've assisted through move out, we've moved 109 people into permanent housing this year. And that's 30% of the folks that we've served. So in 2017, LCS exited 20% of its clients to permanent housing. In 2019, I don't have 2018 data transition year, it is, I don't have it. But in 2019, we exited 20% of our clients to permanent housing. And so, so far in 2020, we've exited 30%. So we're slowly making progress. And we're still sort of in a transition year, as they say in sports. But we are, but the goal is to exit 75% of our clients to permanent housing. And that's an outcome we're required to achieve by ESG funding. So we have, that's what, that's what they ask us to achieve. And that's what ESG and HUD thinks is reasonable and achievable and important for communities who receive that funding to achieve. So I would say that, you know, numbers like 20% and 14%, and even 30% are not sufficient, not, especially not in a community with this many resources for people experiencing homelessness. And with this much, much passion about equity for people experiencing homelessness, we can do a lot better. So that's really over the next year where I'm really focused on, on building our bench strength. And I think, I think that the shelter has the major role to play in, in ensuring that people who are homeless exit to housing. That is our job. We are the, we are the shop in town for getting people from homelessness bridged through shelter to housing, and we have to take on that responsibility. And I think that that's the pivot that I was hired to make. That's the pivot that the county and city commissions have supported our board in making. And that's also the pivot that's been the most confusing and difficult for the, some people in the community to absorb. And I understand that. And hopefully, you know, over time, we'll see the kind of transformation in, in people's lives so that people will understand that this is an issue of justice, justice and an issue of equity. And, you know, it's only when folks are permanently housed that they can recover from substance use disorder, recover sustainably from a mental health disorder and move on with their lives. And so that's really like my passion and that's really what the pandemic has illuminated to be true. And that's going to continue to be what we work on doing over the next year.
Maybe talk about how much money you raised for giving you your other fundraising? And then we maybe, that, that's the only thing I can think of that we, you haven't highlighted, those other fundraising efforts that you've been successful with.
Yeah, we have, we have had a successful year with fundraising. What we really had was a really successful drive last November, December and January. We had like sort of banner months in terms of like fundraising, those, those three months. We weren't able to have a event this year. And so like a lot of people in town are, are fundraising. Past February has really, has kind of stagnated, but we've still been able to raise funds that we need to raise for Monarch Village and stay solvent. And so that's really, really awesome. And of course, the federal funding we're receiving is really, really helping. But we did have a really great Giving Tuesday yesterday. So we raised almost $10,000 for Giving Tuesday across our social media and across our email platforms, which is really, really cool. And we had some folks make matching gifts. And some of those funds, we'll see if Facebook matches them. So Facebook matches up to $7 million in donations on Giving Tuesday. And so we'll find out when the funds hit our bank account, if they match them. So that was really, really successful. And then the last thing we've been fundraising for really actively is Monarch Village. And we're relying pretty heavily on foundations to support that. We've raised around, I think, $50,000 from, $40,000 from individual donors for Monarch Village, $10,000 from Douglas Community Foundation. But we've, we've gotten a really amazing gift from the Maybe Foundation, which is a regional foundation that supports capital improvement projects for organizations in the Texas, Oklahoma and the rest of the Midwest. And so they've issued us a challenge grant of $150,000. So once we raise $630,000 for that project, then we can access this grant of $150,000. And so we're pretty close. We have $230,000 left to raise, a couple more foundations with pending applications. And so hopefully by, hopefully by January or February, we'll be, we'll be at our goal. So keep your fingers crossed for that, that's super exciting. I'm, I'm absolutely confident that we will get the funds, funds raised by early spring so that we can get the tiny houses delivered in the spring. So that's the plan for that. And then that is really, really exciting.
What questions do you have commissioners that Renee or, or I can answer?
Renee, this is Commissioner Kelly. You, you said that we could do better than 30%. But you didn't give away what percent you think it should be, where we should be. I'm just curious. I thought you were going to tell us, but then you didn't. And I, I just wondered where you thought that might be.
Well, the goal is 75% because that is the ESG goal.
Do you think we'll be there next year? Or do, I mean, that seems like a huge jump. Yeah. I mean, so where do you think we'll be?
If we, if next year we did 50%, that would be amazing. I think that that would be amazing. You know, it really depends on our, our ability to, it depends on two things. I don't want to say it depends entirely on our ability to access funds because we have to have the expertise on our staff to actually get people exited to homelessness. There's been a lot of conversation about like, what case management model is appropriate in the shelter? And I've kind of borrowed models from like more urban areas that, that emphasize housing navigation, landlord engagement, and that emphasized stabilization. So past the point of exit to permanent housing, that you're still providing people with follow-up services and ongoing case management while they're receiving rental assistance. So that's, that's crucial. You have to have people on your team who are helping people fill out the Housing Authority application, helping people talk to landlords, helping people navigate like issues like eviction on their record, identify the right housing opportunity for them. And so in January, I'm, I already moved one staff member to a stabilization manager role. So she's currently helping folks do housing navigation and providing the follow-up support. In January, I'm moving a staff member into a housing navigator role. So they will full-time work with guests on filling out housing application, applications and communicating with landlords. So that's, I'm really excited about that. And, and that will make it possible for us to connect more people to housing. Without those services, folks can be kind of left to their own devices. And it's just, it's too hard. It's really hard to exit a shelter to housing and get an application approved. And through this year, I've gotten appreciation for the barriers to housing that exist in Lawrence, which before I was like, I'm from Chicago, like it's literally, it can't be that bad. But there's, it's, there's some things that are bad. Like there, there are some landlord practices that are, that are really difficult for our guests to overcome with their histories of eviction or histories of, of criminal conviction. Or because of their, because maybe the only income they're bringing is SSI or the only, and they have a rental subsidy, but like a landlord, a corporate landlord at a multi-unit rental property won't accept a subsidy. So, so there's some things like that that, that make it hard. But the last thing that's really important is it's really important for people to know that people don't exit our shelter to housing without a subsidy. They don't. That doesn't happen. If you think about how much it costs to get, pay for a security deposit in first month's rent, it's about $1,500. Think about how long it would take any one of us to save $1,500. Nobody on this calls a billionaire. It is hard to save $1,500. Like, you, you know what I mean? So, so doing it in a shelter on minimum wage, that's really rough. It's, it's, you might be able to pay your rent once you get in, but putting aside the money can take months and months and months and months. And so everybody leaves here with help, with, with a security deposit, first month's rent, or if they need it for a lot longer than that, maybe three to 12 months, that's what rapid rehousing does. And so, so if we're going to exit 75% of people to permanent housing, we have to have rental assistance available for 75% of the clients that we serve. And so hopefully ESG will, will help us bridge that gap. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to access COC funding for that in the near future. And I'm really hopeful now that we're seeing a change in the federal administration. I'm just like really hopeful that we'll move back to like Obama era level of investment in those programs. So that will really, really help.
I think, you know, Renee mentioned it, you know, what she just talked about, I think are, you know, those environmental challenges. You know, and I think, you know, affordable housing and the diversity of affordable housing for these unique populations, permanent supportive housing just continues to be the one that we need more of. We don't have enough of in the community, but Renee can't hit those targets alone. And I think that she illustrates that so nicely. And what all of the agencies working so closely together these days has yielded is this, this great relationship with the administrator of the ESG Fund, James Chisholm, with KHRC, who continues to bring us opportunities and brings them to Danny Walters with the City of Lawrence, who just, just busts her butt to connect. She's on all the calls. She's making sure that she's listening to where there's funding opportunities. She's bringing them to Renee, she's bringing them to Burt Nash. And then she's also bringing them to, bringing opportunities to, one of the things that Renee mentioned a minute ago was issues of landlords. I think a lot of great things have happened with landlords in the past few months in terms of the work that the Housing Stabilization Collaborative has done with tenants to homeowners and family promise. But there's a lot more work that needs to be done to sustain this work. And so one of the ESG potential funded projects that the city's going to be putting into their application is going to be for a landlord liaison position that is going to be embedded with the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. And that came out of James with the ESG program reaching out to Danny and I saying, I'd love to give this money to one of your organizations to do something with that kind of helps with these upstream solutions that I know you all need in Lawrence. And Danny and I both just kind of said, we don't really know how to administer that kind of a program in our organizations, but we could think of a quasi-governmental agency that does do it really well and already needs to have those relationships. And thankfully Shannon Houri immediately said, yes, I've been wanting to have a position like this. And Shannon, no surprise, fully appreciates that this is a position that not only works for the Housing Authority, but works with all the partners. Because, you know, they're just as closely embedded with the coordinated entry system and working with Lawrence Community Shelter, Burt Nash Catholic Charities. So that's really going to be an infrastructure level improvement that I'm super excited to see play out over the next year.
Sometimes all you need in a, in a, when you're engaging with a landlord is, is just someone to, you know, I think that like, I don't want to like sentimentalize like landlord distrust of people who are, have a history of homelessness. Like I think it's prejudice and it's discrimination, discrimination. Nonetheless, it's legal. And so what you sometimes need is someone who just says, look, I can vouch for this person. We are supporting this person. You can lia, you can talk to us, you can communicate with us. And you and I together, us the supportive services provider and you, the landlord, are going to work together to make this tenancy successful. And so that's what a really, what the landlord liaison can do. And then that's what, that's what a housing navigator can do as well. So, so we'll have that and that'll be for us, maybe funded by ESG. But if not, I'll just fund it ourselves. So it's, it's really, really important. It's really impactful and helpful. So, so that's just, it's a really smart thing to, to invest in.
So Renee, I, I just, well, it's kind of a big question, but I don't, I don't know how relevant it is anymore. But first a comment, which is, this is amazing. Your, your report and your, your ability to work through this pandemic and, and be new in the community and pull everybody together the way you have is remarkable. And Jill, your work as our representative on the board, you're so much more than that. I think you're a key person in this community to pull all of these things together. So I think we owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude. It's, it's another example of how important it is to have everyone be collaborative and how important it is to have one or two people who really, you know, well, in your case, Jill, maybe not the subject matter expert, but, but an expert at getting folks to sit down at the table and work together. And so thank you for that. My question is, so there's so much emphasis now on getting people out of the shelter or, or stay much, much shorter time. And so housing is more the emphasis now, right? Permanent housing rather than emergency shelter. I mean, and, and quite a bit of money's been invested in that building to make it more habitable. I don't know how the energy efficiency is going, but I mean, what do you foresee for that actual facility? Do you, do you have a long list still of infrastructure needs there? Or are they, is it getting smaller and smaller because that facility is less and less a key part of? I mean, it's a part, but it's a part of a much larger vision now.
I think that we are going to see that people are just, shelter is always going to be necessary here. We're not going to be able to move people from homelessness into the right permanent housing thing like the day of. It's just one, one day, you know, that would be, that's a beautiful vision for any community. But we'll, we'll always need access, immediate access to emergency shelter for folks if they are experiencing homelessness. So it is crucial. It is really important. But I think sometimes what I'm encountering in Douglas County is for some people, the assumption that there's no place beyond emergency shelter for people. And so I talk about housing so much because I want people to understand that there is a place beyond emergency shelter for everyone. And no one is excluded from, from the dream of permanent housing. There's no one. Everyone deserves to be housed if they need to be housed. And it's also the best place for the community, the best place for them. And, and so that's why I talk so much about it. And, but nonetheless, you're right, we are making a huge investment in how we, how we shelter people here. Right now, we're using CARES funds to renovate the bathrooms in the dorms, which were just almost destroyed. And so we're, it's really, really exciting. And we also know privacy in the bathrooms or congregate showers. So we're installing shower stalls and, and new walls and floors so that they're easy to clean and no water travels through the doors and renovating the ventilation and all of that. So that's an expensive project. We have funding to do more projects, including building an isolation space and in, on the property and a new entrance for clients is what we're going to provide. So that way, we don't have the same foot traffic for vendors, for everyone who's coming in and out of the building, which just creates an area for potential COVID transmission from, from anybody who's coming in here for any reason. So that's kind of another thing we'll do in the spring. But, and then we'll have folks sheltering, family sheltering on the property still in the tiny house village, which will still be an emergency shelter operation. And we actually will have capacity to, to shelter more individuals through the tiny house village than we had in the existing family wing. And so we'll see how that plays out and how we utilize that space. And when we built the tiny house village, we didn't seek an increase in our special, in capacity through our special use permit with the city, which only allows us to shelter 120 individuals per night. So we won't exceed that. Right now, for the duration of the pandemic, at the shelter, we may increase very soon to 60 single adults inside the shelter. And that's based on our ability to provide surveillance testing. So if I can test people regularly and just make sure that everyone's healthy, we can increase our capacity to 60 folks inside the building. The hotel that's being rented for winter shelter will be rented in full, the hotel will. So it's between, depends on the hotel who wins the contract with the city, but it could be between 50 and 80 hotel rooms available this winter for folks experiencing homelessness. And we're still working out with the city who will manage that, whether it will be LCS or it will be the city managing that. So, so yeah, I think we'll, we have some things to consider and some bridges to cross as a community in terms of our pandemic response before we know what LCS's capacity is going to be. And, and, but we will be able to fully shelter people in Monarch Village because people will be isolated in there. They'll be able to quarantine in those spaces, which is awesome. So once we have that launched, we'll be pretty close to our special use permit limit, I think, this spring. And, and that's the plan. And then that's just more stuff we have to discuss as a board, kind of how to continue to program. I do want to continue to emphasize exiting people to permanent housing. And we just have to make sure we have enough staff to facilitate that. But it's less about, now with Monarch Village, it's less about our hourly staff coverage, right? Because that was a real concern before with people in tiny houses. My hope is that they won't have to be supervised as closely, but we'll see once we launch it, how we're able to manage it. We're also able to leverage AmeriCorps this year to help support our, our staff who are on staff. And we just want to make sure that people have access to the right services so that they can exit, exit to permanent housing. Does that answer your question? Okay, cool.
Renee, this is Commissioner DeRusso, and I don't have any questions. I just want to make a couple of comments. And one, I'm really excited about the, the tiny homes, the Monarch Village. I appreciate the opportunity to come out and see the unveiling. Cause I, I'm really impressed with what they were able to do with the cargo container and how bright they are. And, and they feel spacious because of all the natural light. And I just think that that's going to just be so important. And people being able to come home from work or kids to be able to come home from school to that, that environment. So I hope your fundraising for that continues to go well when you get that grant. I'll be excited to see that, that space open up. And then too, you know, a year ago, a little over a year ago, when you came into this, you were hit with a lot of challenges and changes. And, and everyone said you were, you were very experienced. And, you know, you guys were putting plans in place for, to meet all of these challenges and changes. And none of those plans included a pandemic. So I just want to say thank you to you and your staff and Jill for how well you guys have handled this and the care you're taking with our vulnerable community members. So keep up the good work.
Thank you so much for saying that. And thank you for coming to the unveiling as well. The, they're, they're beautiful little units. And I'm so excited about that. Yeah. And that's right. This is, this was, this is like all of this, all of the things that we had to do, plus the pandemic, which has been really crazy. And I, and I'm just, I'm so grateful for this organization at Douglas County though. And I'm super grateful for, for the city. I'm so grateful for our public health partner at Lawrence Douglas County Public Health. These are amazing organizations and certainly could not have done it without Jill. Jill also has maintained her commitment to figuring out this homelessness issue plus the pandemic, which has been really, really amazing. So Jill also has, has totally taken it all on. So, so yeah, I'm super grateful. I'm, I just feel like I am in the right place at the right time. I really do think that despite the, the kind of crisis. And I'm super grateful to the three of you certainly for being so supportive.
Renee, I'm really pleased to hear you say how much to bring the city and the county into that conversation and have Jill talk about how our partners at the city are working together with the county. I think there are those in our community who want to look for division whenever possible. And this is one of those things that we work together on and that we have to solve together. I do, and I just really appreciate you coming in and recognizing that and elevating that, even though I think others out there are looking for ways to split us up and to put us against each other. So this is one of those things that you've just done a champion of a job. I was so pleased to read in your report how you didn't back off your goals. You know, you stuck with them during the pandemic and how brave that was. Because I'm sure it felt daunting at times. I can't imagine there weren't tears shed at some point, like how are we going to do this? And congratulations to you for that. I did have one more question. Sorry, commissioners, I know we're getting to use our end time, but I'm really interested, you mentioned policies, you know, that make it hard for, to get folks into housing. And understanding that there's differences between what the city, you know, has the ability to do and what the county has the ability to do. Do you have any insights that might help us sort of think about things that we can do? You know, maybe that we're just not even aware of. I'm always interested in policies that are not equitable or make it more difficult that we just don't even think about. Do you have any experience with that or things that you'd like to share with us on that?
Yeah, I think that what we encounter is again, what is, I think of as like legal discrimination, like against people who have an eviction on their record or people who have a criminal conviction on their record or, or people who don't have the three times the monthly rent as their income, but they have, but they have SSI or they have a rental subsidy bringing down the cost of rent. And so all of those things, we really should confront as a community and say, "Look, prolonging people's homelessness so, so that landlords can control who's housed and who's not and can control, have this much freedom around the cost of rent and who accesses housing is actually causing, costing us money as a community." And I think it's probably costing us more money than to allow discrimination to go on, these legal forms of discrimination versus like the amount of money that landlords are making. You know what I'm saying? I think those things, I think what we should look at is how much money is this kind of discrimination actually costing us? Because if it's prolonging people's homelessness or leading people towards chronic homelessness, it's costing us a lot of money. Think of all the services we're providing to help people overcome, overcome these barriers. So, so that's kind of my thought about that. And then also like the eviction prevention is really important. So it's on both sides. We really want to make sure that like, if, if there's resources available for a tenant, if it's like non-payment of rent, well, how can we get resources together to keep them from being evicted? Because again, that's going to cost us money as a community. It's probably, it's much cheaper to prevent a family from becoming homeless to the tune of $10,000 per household, rather than allow them to be homeless. And so eviction prevention is really, really important too.
Well, keep sharing those things with Jill. And I know Jill knows some of them. I mean, we do have some people working for us at the state level when it comes to some of, because some of those policies you explained are state level or even federal level policies. And so that may be a good way to leverage some of, some of our lobbying at the state level. So appreciate that. Just so much gratitude for the work that you've done. I, I was so pleased last year when you provided this report because you really stepped up to the challenge and you keep coming back because it's good news every time. So we really, really appreciate it. Commissioners, anything else? Jill, Sarah? Okay, with that, we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting. Thank you all. Thank you, Renee, for joining us.